Here.
Councilmember Chris Ellis. He's on his way. He's coming in the door right now.
He's coming in the door.
Stay here.
Stay here.
Here.
All right, forgive us.
Ellis is present. Councilmember Jay Reeser.
Here.
Councilmember Greg Barton.
Here.
Councilmember Larry Sanders.
Here.
Chief of Police Stephen Carlisle.
On his way.
On his way.
Making copies.
Police Captain Jeff Campbell.
Present.
City Secretary Greg Campbell.
Here.
Administrator Scott.
Thank you. Yeah, all right, so. So I thought I'd discuss considerably proposed budget fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six, and scheduled a public hearing for September fifteenth, twenty-twenty-five at five thirty. All right, I missed part of the meeting, guys, last time, I had to leave early. So I would ask you to please pick up for, if you almost got to fill me in, but I'd like to pick up where y'all left off, are we still on the mid?
So what we did after you left is we went through the budget, line by line.
Okay.
And Mr. Davis asked very good questions about a few of the line items, but we went through fairly quickly, considering. Councilmember Davis, anything stand out that you asked about? I can't think of anything that stood out.
No, there were a few that were just calculations that when we looked at the previous two years' actual, the forecast for the budget was either greatly up or greatly down. So I think some of them were the insurance rebate, we were counting zero over the last couple of years, we had a significant rebate, either ten or twenty thousand dollars depending on the year. And then the workers' comp from the administration is showing less than a thousand, where the previous two years had been over five thousand or something. So there were just a few anomalies in there.
I didn't look at the percentage, and it's the right percentage is like zero point four one.
So we may just need to figure out why we paid so much the last two years? And I know we did reallocation personnel from administration to permitting for clerk or code enforcement, but is that what accounts for why we paid so much previously, just to make sure we have enough money?
I have a thought.
Yes, sir.
Greg, keep going with recap. Did we stay with the mid-range point five-four-seven five?
We, we did.
Is that what y'all are looking at?
We did, we did, so, yeah. Yes, really, all, all we did was go over the, the line items, we didn't, we didn't really ask for any, any changes or modifications, you know, there was some discussion around each one, and then.
Right, and then there was some.
We just, we went through all the, all the incomes and then all the expenses and.
Yeah, and then there were some questions come up, and so we had the research and the answers for that, is that where we're at tonight?
That's where we're.
Yes.
Continue, councilman, I'm sorry.
Well, that's essentially it is.
She can go ahead and answer.
So what we basically did was look at the previous year's budget versus the proposed one without challenging much of it, just making sure that it was in line with understanding of where we had increases or decreases. So, you know, we discussed the maintenance vehicle, we discussed the police department's request for two additional officers, but we did not challenge anything at the time, it was more just seeking information of what was in the budget, and I think tonight we're at the point where we'd like to understand.
Got you, but you have the floor, you can start, sir.
Okay, well, then from the information that I provided to Mr. Castleberry and yourself after the review, just kind of read through my notes quickly. Maintenance vehicle, we requested a new heavy-duty vehicle that cost roughly seventy thousand dollars, and just my two cents on that is I don't know that we need a brand-new thirty-five-hundred vehicle for what the city needs in the short distances we travel. If we're going to get a new vehicle, and I'm not questioning the age of the vehicle we have, but if we need a new vehicle, I think we should consider a used vehicle and a good quality vendor. And then the other thing to consider is, are we really getting our value out of the purchase of the mini excavator? And do we want to consider selling it and then renting as needed for either the Mini-X or the Mini-X and the dump trailer? And then try to make very specific decisions on when we're going to use it, so we're not renting it at day rates. We rent it at a month rate and use it twice a year, or rent it at a week rate and use it quarterly, something to that effect, as opposed to owning it, maintaining it, and then having to have the larger vehicle to move it around.
Well, on the excavator, like, I use today for instance, I'm sorry?
No, no, keep going, was that?
That was on the maintenance.
Keep going, I, I want to get all of your thoughts.
There, I'm sorry.
Okay. Well, all, minor things is, we had a significant budget for safety supplies the last few years, and we've never spent it, so just looking at, do we want to reallocate that money from safety supplies and general supplies to where we're really spending it? And then make sure that our salaries are where they need to be, right? I don't know what we have in there for salary increases and number of people, but just making sure we have the staff correctly and the pay is accurate. Police budget on Tbolon, just looking at the overall contract, my concern is, in order to make the budget work, we said that we were going to bring the officer in delayed, so we're not paying a full-year salary, but that doesn't take into account that next year we're going to have to have a full-year salary, and so we're going to have to increase the police budget again, which means raising taxes again to cover that or cutting someplace else. In further review of the Tbolon contract, looked at it, and it's not consistent across, so when we look at all the fringe benefits, whether it's certification pay, certi- certificate pay, longevity bonus, things like that, they're not at a consistent rate. And maybe that's allocated per the officers that are actually assigned to that contract, but where make up around numbers, say it's forty percent is what we're paying for salaries out of the patrol officers, we're not keeping that consistent for all the fringe benefits and for some of the other things like training supplies, technology, I think they may be paying a little more, or, I think it was training they were paying more, but technology they were paying less, and none of the Tbolon contract goes to cover the court costs, although they represent about half the citations written. For the Roman Forest Officer, I guess, discussion there, we need to take into account that is this going to be the single request, or are we going to request another officer as Section Four builds out, or does this officer cover the need for Section Four as well? And then ongoing expenses, again, just if we're delaying both officers in October to not take the full hit of their salaries for their full financial year, then next year we're going to be under budget, under revenue for the budget required, we're going to raise the police budget for their extra months of salary. Court revenue, this was a question we had with the judge on Monday, and looking through the court expenses, I think it's accounted for there, but just understanding that the state takes about forty percent of the revenue through their fees, and there are some state fees, so I think that is accounted for, but we'd just like to verify that what we're showing as revenue is offset by the expenses of what we're paying back to the state as our budget, only takes into account what the city is keeping, if that's clear. Code enforcement was just an observation, we're projecting three thousand dollars in revenue next year versus an expense of seventy thousand. I realize that that officer is also doing permitting, permitting has a revenue of ninety-seven thousand with an expense of sixty-one thousand, so there's a thirty-five thousand dollar offset there, but even so, we're still at a net negative of about thirty-one thousand for code enforcement and permitting. Right, permitting is actually revenue positive, but code enforcement is exceptionally negative with only forecasting three thousand dollars in citations collected. The permitting does not account for anything in the Section Four new development, we're assuming no new homes there. And just something to consider again is the discussion that maybe we want to consider outsourcing some of the permitting to Bureau Veritas to free up some of that time for either the court clerk or the code enforcement officer. And then, shout out, the last thing we talked about was attorney's fees that currently we're budgeting for twenty-six, less than we've spent year-to-date with two months left to go. So unless we can do something to control that, then we need to increase our budget for attorney's fees. That concludes my comments that I sent out.
Okay, well, I want to do this, so how we kind of got the structure, I want to move on, Greg, thank you, Greg, for closing that meeting for me the other night. I'd like to move on to you, I'd like to get your thoughts on these and any additional thoughts, and then what we're going to do, actually, we all have our term, we're going to discuss each one. Is that okay with you?
Okay.
All right. Start with maintenance vehicle.
Yeah, I, I too have concerns about the size of the truck. I think you know where I stood as far as an excavator, I would like to see if it makes sense to sell it and just outsource those activities, maybe use a smaller truck that doesn't have to haul an excavator, right? As, as far as the police budget, I have concern about the two officers. My concern is primarily around, I don't think we can afford additional officers. I think we're, we're going to be put into a position of trying to retain the officers we have, or the number of officers we have, and trying to compete with the other surrounding agencies. I, I just don't see that being possible at all with adding two officers. It'd be hard enough not adding officers, right, to, to have some money in the budget. It seems like our budget is, is, it is primarily going to salaries, right? There's, there's nothing there. So, so, so cuts in the future, if we don't have more income coming in, it's going to be difficult to provide those increases that we need to, to save somewhat. Not necessarily competitive, it's probably the wrong term, but at least, at least be attractive as a, as a, as a, as a place for police officer work outside of the other agencies. So outside of that, my, one other concern I have is that we're talking about buying mowers and we're talking about buying trucks, but any coming out of the budget, it's coming out of, it's, it's coming out of FEMA money, right?
Yes, sir.
That FEMA money's not going to be there next year, God forbid we get a hurricane every year so that we can buy extra stuff, so I feel like that, that should be not buying necessities, it should be buying, you know, paying for the things that we, that we cover during that storm, not buying necessities, those necessities should be coming out of the budget. Otherwise, looking down the road, we can't afford it, we don't have a hurricane for the next ten years, we don't get to buy another truck for maintenance or, you know, more, more mowers. And I, I guess, this year especially being, being a wetter year, where it's, it's become more obvious that, that mowing is not occurring, so I, I think it's important to have reliable equipment, that we can take care of the mowing on a season like this, you know, it's caught us, you know, empty-handed, if you will, with only one mower this year, right, so we can't, we can barely keep up with it right now, I don't think that's a good place to be. So I, I think we have to figure out how to budget, budget for that outside, you know, within the budget, and not, not just with FEMA money. And then lastly, concern I have is, if we're going to ask residents to give back some of the money that we've given them back over the last couple of years, I think we've, I think we've lowered the tax rate for, what, since twenty sixteen, right, so eight years in a row, we're talking about giving a little bit of back, back. The questions that have been asked, what are we getting for our money? And I think we have to say, we're doing something other than just salaries, whether that's a piece of park equipment, or if it's new mowers and we're keeping, you know, the, the boulevard and the park and, you know, empty lots looking, looking nice. You know, we're here to keep our property values up, but we also need to, I think, provide something in the form of beautification, so people won't just need to pay it again for, for salaries, so. And lastly, as far as attorney fees, I, I do agree that it's something we, we need to look at, I think as a council and mayor, I think we have to look at how often we go out and ask for, for their assistance, but, but, you know, we're not, we're not a big enough city to have some really big attorney fees, we need to, we need to negotiate with them and see what we can, what we can do. Mr. Castleberry's going to do that, so I think it's a good thing, so. So that's kind of my thoughts.
Code enforcement, what are your thoughts on code enforcement? I mean, obviously what he's saying is, is fact, the numbers that he has put before us are actually fact.
So code enforcement, I believe, is what helps keep our property values up, but I think it's a service that we have to provide, whether it's a net negative or not, right? I think we have to, we, we have to encourage people to, to follow our ordinances and to keep their, their property values up so they don't negatively impact their neighbors. I think it's something we have to do. Now, if we can offset that with ticket writing, I, 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 I think it needs to be our objective to not ticket our residents unless they're pushed to the point that they're being uncooperative, and that's the only, only route we can go, well, then that, that should help offset some of the fees of code enforcement, right? That's my thoughts on code enforcement.
Okay. Councilman Sanders, I'm going to flip over here, give your thoughts on everything we talked about, can I add anything that you had?
The thing on, on a truck, if we're going to keep our excavator and use it, we need a dependable truck, it don't have to be a brand-new one.
That's it.
If we're going to keep the excavator, we need a truck that's going to be dependable, but we do not need a new one. I think even a four or five-year-old one that's in good shape would suffice.
Okay.
And we talked about police officer requirements, chief, I have to, what is the state law about a number of police officers on duty per resident?
It's not the state law.
It's not, it's just what we, we govern.
Yeah, it's the statistic that.
We can, we can discuss all of it, we're going to discuss each one of it, absolutely. I'm, so I'm just wanting your questions on this, and when we get into the discussion, everyone's concerned, where's the answer?
Okay, other thing, I think in our budget, we need to split Tbolon, Roman Forest, different, so we know what we're spending in Tbolon and what we're spending in Roman Forest. I agree with Greg, the, the mowers, we, we need at least one more to, to suffice, if not two. The, we have a part-time individual, by standard working in maintenance, we have to look at their salary. Code, code enforcement, with us talking to the judge last night, I, I think that's going to pick up, and I think we might maybe change some of our ordinances for that, I mean, that's something we're going to have to look at down the road. And attorney fees, way too much. I think we need an attorney closer to us, and I have to pay for him to drive from Katie over here and drive back, you know, paying him this hour, okay? That's my thoughts.
I agree, I agree with that. Councilman Reeser, since you weren't late, you can go next.
Thank you. And since I wasn't here, some of this has been very interesting. One of the things that I think.
Microphone.
She's turned on. Apparently, is it on? It's off. I don't know whether Tbolon on the west side is totally populated or not, Tbolon is like any other housing area, as more people move in, they get more revenue because now they have people paying HOA fees, so I think that's going to impact what they will be able to do, they've been good to us so far, I, I would hate to see that relationship hurt, because I think that they, they done good. The excavator, normally we need a mess excavator, and what I've observed, it's something we need now, not, hopefully, the guys that we rented from have one that's available. And if that means that we have to get a truck, I agree, we just need to make sure, and I don't have a problem with a used truck, we just need to make sure that we get the proper tonnage, I don't know what the weight on the excavator is, but when you get a pickup truck that's smaller than the load that it folds, you've got problems, so we would need to match, match those. The, on the mowers, and going back and talking about FEMA, I think we have FEMA funds that's available to buy some of these things now, when four or five years comes by, and from our record of having hurricanes in here, I've been here twenty years, and, and we've had at least, what, five severe hurricanes come through here in twenty years, I can't quite name them all, but it's been pretty close to that, it's done various amounts of damage, we had one, two, three, maybe four in the twenty years. So I don't know whether the grants that we got back when those hurricanes came through, or keep hold of what we're doing now, they have a lot of different rules, but I think that's something we need to consider. And as far as gaining extra money, we've had people come into the city, you know, and want to do, and have done presentations on getting grants, I think we need to pursue that closely and see what they can do for us, because there's going to be even money on the table with some, somebody that's professionally trained to do it.
How about, I've got some new information, I don't think we need to go too deep into the police, into the police positions, I think we're going to hear some different, some different plans on this.
So you covered just about everything, attorney's fees, what are you thinking on that?
Attorney's fees have certainly gone up, we were, before we lost Lawrence Attorney, he retired, I think, he was, at least, the golden egg for us, he kept his rates down, he kept them reasonable.
He did.
But I've been looking for an attorney with some things going on in New Mexico, and attorneys are not cheap, so if we're going to get another attorney, you get what you pay for, and so we need to be very careful about that, we don't want to get one that's more interested in playing golf than what he is taking care of, well, it's hard to say, but anyway, we want to get a good attorney at a reasonable, at a reasonable price. Now, whether it's with the same people or not, I agree with the negotiation.
Got you. Thank you, Councilman Ellis, I was just, I was really just picking on you.
Oh, no.
I wasn't expecting you to be late.
No, it gave me a little extra time to kind of read one of the notes. With the safety and maintenance, my suggestion is leave that there, and then if we go halfway through the year, through quarter through the year, then do a bu- a budget amendment, and then move that into general. The police, the, the extra police officer, the two extra police officers, I was just concerned about making a salary and then just continuing to keep them in case something happens. I like, I like the one officer, if the budget looks good and if the money is there, my suggestion for the other officer is to make him half code enforcement and then half officer, and then make Josh full-time permanent, if that is allowed, something to, food for thought. You know, just kind of going over some things and watching the news with Harris County and then Montgomery County with the races, it's just something to consider, and maybe even if there's surplus, offer a small bonus, I don't know, I don't want to make, I say small bonus, I mean, they're so, I don't know, I was kind of talking to Scott about anywhere from like five hundred to a thousand dollars, like a Christmas bonus or something like that, if there's a surplus of money, I would like to see that, instead of trying to maximize our budget. The truck, if we do end up, or we, since we're getting that FEMA money, I would suggest allocating forty to fifty thousand of that and purchasing a used truck, taking the remainder, remaining balance and put into the tax pool to let it gain interest. Those looking at, you know, the future of the city in two, three years, in two, three years, we're going to need another officer, in two, three years, we're going to need another maintenance person. If we take twenty thousand, twenty-five thousand dollars, if we don't spend it for, you know, if a hurricane hits us, if we're able to just hold on to that and it gains five, six, seven thousand in interest, in three years, when we need another vehicle, we will have roughly thirty thousand dollars, or whatever that may be. Also, just kind of talking with Scott a little bit, it, there's a potential that we may have a little bit of surplus left over, and if that is the case, I don't know what that's going to be, I would like to see some park equipment being involved with it, instead of, yeah, I, wearing the resident hat, I'm just want, you know, if you, the residents have asked, you know, we want something to park, you know, I don't think they're going to understand a maintenance truck and two officers, it's going to be hard to sell when you're raising the taxes they need. And, and there's a lot of kids here as well, a lot of young families, and we, I think we need to try to accommodate something, and I know it's expensive, and I know, you know, we don't have a huge budget for that, but it's something to consider, even if it's small. The attorney, the fees are high, I think if we are going to look at that, we need to try to negotiate something after the Thornberry contract, because I don't want to get in the middle of, you know, we're halfway in between and they're like, because if you hire me as attorney, you're like, you're fired, or we're going to go somewhere else, and we'll be like, okay, whatever, good luck. Dead smug thoughts on that, you know, I think I covered everything.
All right, thank you, gentlemen. Okay, so now we're going to take these, we're going to discuss them, Chief, I'm going to start with you on the police department.
I'd like to hear your opinion.
My opinion is going to come out during discussion.
Okay.
Okay. I want to hear your new proposal that you briefly briefed me on for the police department.
All right, so I've been doing a lot of thinking since we had our last budget meeting, and a lot of things that's steering me is what Commissar's Court did for the county. Competing with Harris County is difficult enough, but it's kind of easy, nobody wants to work in Harris County, but Houston raised their pay drastically, Harris County themselves and Sheriff raised their pay drastically to match that. Now, our Commissar's Court.
Drastically, is that what an hour?
Uh, I don't know the dollar per hour, but it's something like eleven grand and stuff like that, but I, I studied more, because I didn't worry too much with Harris County, because they've always been higher than us, and we're just, you got officers that want to work in Harris County, you got officers that don't want to work in Harris County. Most officers don't really want to work in Harris County. But Montgomery County now has taken notice, they're afraid they're going to lose their deputies to Harris County, so the Commissar's Court, and last week, up their pay, and I've got what they did here. This is just the deputy's place. So the pay up, ten thousand four hundred dollars. We were already behind Montgomery County. We were already behind Montgomery County by a little bit, but, you know, that's to be expected, you know, it's, I'm being behind, you know, they're running call to call, call really busy, and we don't have to do that as, as much, calls are increasing, but not as bad, but they increased ten thousand four hundred for the bottom line deputy, and I'm not taking that rate, I'm, I'm, I'm looking out for the deputy, I'm not taking all that. and I'm not taking that raise, I'm, I'm, I'm looking out for the deputy, I'm not taking all that, uh, neither is Jeff, and neither is, uh, our lieutenant. But, uh, the bottom line officer, I've worked it out with the same numbers that we presented before, the exact same numbers, to where the bottom line officers get the ten thousand four hundred raise to match Harris, Montgomery County's raise, making us at least the same, or the same position we're in if we do that. So, we're still behind them.
Do Montgomery County officers get a vehicle?
Yes.
They're assigned to the officers, they're not pool vehicles?
No.
Most of them are take home vehicles.
So, uh, there's other things inside their proposal, there's many more slides and things on the top end, I'm not trying to match, I'm just trying to match the officer pay, the entry level officer pay, which is, uh, if they got a ten thousand four hundred raise, if I can match that, I can keep my people. I'm, I'm looking at losing people. So, I can talk till I'm blue in the face and justify, which I have, I can justify adding, uh, the two officers in January and stuff like that. I do agree with you, you're, we're setting ourselves for the next budget, you're behind the start line, so I get that. Uh, but, I've got the justice here, I don't even wanna pass out, because this year, just this year, being a little bit behind, I have a surplus of thirty-eight thousand dollars in my salary line item, because we were searching for officers, and, and, and we couldn't find them, you know, the pool is very little, even being a little bit behind. Now, with this change, uh, we, we can't even keep up, there's no way, we're gonna lose officers. And if I lose officers, and then can't, nobody wants to come here, because Harris County, uh, Houston, and Montgomery County's got openings. And one less, there's no way I can even believe that I can fill these positions I'm asking for.
How many current patrol officers do you have versus yourself, Ms. Garza? And then are the, you have officers that are assigned strictly administrative, how many patrol officers do we have?
Yeah, so I have a total of twelve officers, that's not counting reserve officers and that. And that includes me, and, uh, I'm the only one that's one hundred percent administrative. We have a supervisor for each shift, we have two shifts supervisors, uh, responsible for that, and each supervisor is in charge of four people, which is including themselves, and, uh, the, you know, like Jackie, she sits at the front office, taking walk-in reports to keep the officers on the street, we've got an investigator, but both of them also fill in for the officers. The captain fills in for the officers, and I do too, in my reserve, because I've got all kind of administrative stuff I gotta handle. Uh, there are times that I go in for the officers on the street too. We always have at least two people on the street, one for the Tbolot, one for Roman Forest. But, s- sometimes, certain times, certain day, certain days of the week, we have an extra person that can float between the two if needed or-
So, you have five, four patrol and one supervisor assigned to Tbolot. Right, you said you've got-
Yeah.
-two supervisors, each with four patrol officers under them, so half of those are Tbolot. Are you gonna be able to renegotiate the Tbolot contract at the additional ten thousand dollars per officer?
What I believe there is that officer that I'm asking there providing that salary up.
Not what I'm asking. Your current contract, can you change that, given that you're going to have to raise your rates to keep your officers, not adding another officer?
Right.
Can you raise your rates to cover what we're already paying, that you're gonna have to pay an extra sixty thousand dollars a year for the officers you've got, not adding another officer?
So, not adding the officer is, uh, the plan for that to, which I have, I have the division done here.
What is the contract, I understand, but when I look at this, Chief, annually, right, you're gonna do this for the next four years, five years.
I understand why I can-
So, my ask is, are we going to be able to negotiate an additional minimum of an additional ten thousand dollars for officer salary plus all the fringes at another thirty, forty percent?
Yeah, so, future years-
He's looking at it like just a year. Hundred thousand dollars per year going forward, otherwise we end up losing money.
Future years, I'm gonna have to negotiate that, yes. This year I'm gonna get it. This year I can get it. But, uh, if we start doing it, now this is a slide-
Well, you say we can handle it, but we did increase the Tbolot contract by a hundred thousand dollars from last year, but that's what it's gonna cost us in salaries for next year. Sixty thousand in raw salaries, plus roughly forty percent fringe benefits, is gonna put us close to a hundred thousand dollars increased just in personnel costs from last year.
Well, that's, but, when the contract is written, it increases per house, does it increase per business?
I understand, but what I'm saying is, per house at that rate isn't gonna cover where we need to be going forward, and it really doesn't even cover us for next year, if we go forward with this five dollar an hour increase for the patrol officers.
Uh, I've done some adjusting here, and I, I'm not just worried you can do it this year.
Well-
But, uh, next year, we will be talking about-
My quick math says I was gonna do it this year.
But, we're not here to approve what happens in fiscal year twenty-six point seven, we're here to approve what happens in fiscal year twenty-five point six.
Do you have what the contract was last year and what the contract is this year for Tbolot's patrols?
Yeah, I passed it out.
You did that to us?
Last year, there's that number, uh, on the far left.
Okay, I'm sorry?
And then the new number is in the note.
Hold on, just a second.
Yeah, I'm not looking at that that much.
It should be on the spreadsheet here.
By the time four years pass, we're gonna be spending approximately seven hundred fifty thousand dollars per officer, the salary increases and benefits. I'm not talking about four years, I'm just talking about the first nine.
He's just letting it for first year.
I don't, I don't even know Commissioner's Court, and I've got a question into the, uh, Commissioner more about that, but that was a side presentation in the presentation, all I'm looking at is the first year, and I believe that's probably all they looked at.
So, from last year's contract to what we're proposing for the twenty-twenty-six contract, the increase is fifteen thousand dollars, but it's gonna cost us a hundred thousand dollars.
Increase fifteen thousand?
One five.
No, not, not the original number, that was actually amended.
So, this is, okay.
That was actually amended, because we amended it, because we, they built out-
Then, do you have what it was at the beginning of the year, can you share that, is that what's in?
Yeah, it's what I handed out, right twenty-
So, okay, so is that forty thousand dollars roughly then?
That's right.
Right. So, from there to there, we're talking roughly forty thousand dollars, yet it's gonna cost us a hundred thousand dollars in salaries. Right, we're gonna be operating at sixty thousand dollars or less than what we need.
Some calculations, we, we also moved around some stuff to, to Tbolot was paying a higher percentage, um, uh, the patrol vehicle-
Of patrol vehicles.
Last year, previous years, that I just handed out.
And they've given money towards the build out of the police station, I'm, I'm not questioning the value of the contract, I'm questioning their rate per household is not going to be adequate to cover this increase, that what, more than half of that cost is gonna fall back on the city. So, we've increased the contract by forty thousand dollars, we've increased the salaries by a hundred thousand dollars, that means the city is gonna end up picking up roughly sixty thousand dollars in that cost for officers for Tbolot, because the Tbolot contract is not increasing enough to cover these salaries.
This is the increase right here.
For-
I said ten thousand four hundred per officer.
That's not fringe benefits, that's not fringe benefits, that's strictly salary.
This, here, I got the percentage.
Okay, but that's-
This is Tbolot.
This-
Based on the percentage.
I understand, but what we're talking about here, ten thousand per officer times five officers is fifty thousand.
Yeah, the number I presented.
Right. Plus you've got unemployment, plus you've got retirement, plus you've got certificate pay, you've got longevity pay, you've got equipment, you've got patrol vehicles, all of that stuff increases.
You've got enlisted there.
I understand, and I've gone through it, and that's the information I sent back to you. The increase in the Tbolot contract year over year doesn't cover those costs.
Well, and what you said back to me with this, with the percentage, forty-three percent was the percentage?
Okay.
Based on the number of officers.
Total salaries, that's correct.
Yeah, and most of those, most of those are forty-three percent.
They are, but there's some other-
But some of them are different because the assigned officers-
I understand.
Some they did. So, now, uh, that's forty-one percent, because we're gonna eliminate that six.
Or, do you know what our rough fringe benefits are we pay on the police department? Is it thirty percent, thirty-five percent, when you figure in insurance, uh, benefits?
There are also this-
Taxes, I understand, but I'm just looking for a rough number, Chief, is that thirty percent, thirty-five percent?
I'm not. I'd have to look at my, uh, Excel.
So, you would have to take that fifty-two thousand, multiply it by one point three five or one point four, and that doesn't-
Yeah, I, I think that, I, I have my cell phone that raises, I have that formula.
I understand, and then I've gone through all those numbers, what I'm saying is, if you add those up, Chief, it's less than the contract increase year over year. Right? We've increased the contract forty thousand, and you're looking at bare minimum fifty-two. So, that's still, and that's already connected to where-
I've had it before.
So, the city is still having to cover those salary differences. And that, to me, does not seem-
Did you, Mayor, did you want to address any other questions that you saw we had?
I do, but I really need this, we need this cleared up before we can actually approve this place. We really need to get, we need to get this figured out.
Have you cleared up with Mitchell Davis, or do you want to clear it up with everybody?
Well, Mitchell Davis is one of them.
He's the one talking.
I know, I understand that.
I, I would like to-
Hang on, hang on, thank you for the observation, Chief, I appreciate that. And yes, I was letting Councilman talk, and I'm gonna let Mr. Pardon talk, 'cause he has some thoughts on this.
Um-
Okay.
I, I don't know this, I mean, I listen to what he's saying, I'm trying to do the math, I, I agree, we, we don't wanna pay-
And I haven't looked at the new paper, I've just gotten it after you and I had a conversation. So, yeah, we do need to look at this, um, but if, if, if what he's saying is true, if the numbers are right, you cannot justify that type of raise for the Tbolot-
I put the numbers right here, and his numbers are wrong.
And I, well, I had-
And he just keeps talking about wrong numbers.
Okay.
I gave him new numbers. He's, he's talking about the numbers that were on the last meeting.
I, I'm not even talking about the numbers that are on there, Chief, I'm just talking about the, the difference between the twenty-twenty-five contract value and the twenty-twenty-six contract value is forty thousand dollars.
And that's what we're looking, and him and I both are looking at that, we're saying-
So, we also set up a new vehicle, was identified this unicorn of a vehicle, which has been taken out of there, all kinds of things could change around, if you look at my new number.
Okay, you know what, we're going to-
I reallocated a lot of things.
We're, we're gonna look at the new numbers, don't you agree, Councilman?
I agree with that.
Let's look at the new numbers before we continue this conversation.
Yeah.
Are we, do you agree with that?
He's, he's been talking about the old numbers, he's-
I understand, and that's on, we're not gonna consider, if, if he's talking about old numbers, we need to look at the new ones. So, let's, let's, we'll, we'll take the time to do that.
Doesn't have anything to do with the individual line item of the number sheet, it's the very top level, forty thousand dollar contract increase, seventy thousand dollars in salaries.
And that's the way I'm looking at it.
There's no way that can balance, doesn't matter what you do with the other numbers, there is no way that balances, we are operating at a negative for the salaries for next year, based on the contract increase.
But we may not be.
Okay, when you're talking about cutting costs, that's a fact, I did, I cut some costs, I bought a, a-
Both y'all, enough.
You've already did.
Let's, let's stop till we look at the numbers, let's just stop on this one.
Can I put my two cents with that?
You, you can, just don't start that conversation again.
I'm not, I think overall, we need to split Roman Forest and Tbolot cost out on the police, so we know exactly what Bolas cost, what Roman Forest, 'cause I don't think any of our citizens here in Roman Forest should be paying for Tbolot.
I absolutely agree with you on that.
That, that's in front of you, right here, this split, it shows you on the far right column.
Understand that this doesn't have what our actuals were for the previous years relating to the Tbolot contract, it has only the budget for twenty-six.
Yes.
It does not have the budget for twenty-four, it does not have the budget for twenty-five, and it has none of the actuals were written associated with that contract.
So, that's something that you have to be pulled out in QuickBooks for comparison.
I can pull that out.
Yes. And that's numbers we also get.
I get the base numbers that, that, now, like you mentioned before, the, the, uh, budget amendment we did, because we collected, they grew faster than they were anticipating, that's why the difference. But, uh, I, I can give you these numbers for the last year and the year before, I still have all that to say.
Get it together with your new numbers, it's your, your proposed numbers, and we need actuals, we need actuals from the previous budget. Come on, is that good?
That's fine.
Any other thoughts on this subject before we move on? There. Let's start with maintenance vehicle. So, my thoughts on the maintenance vehicle, and I've heard y'all's thoughts, um, I'm gonna throw the maintenance vehicle and mini excavator in here together. Okay, my thoughts are, I think the mini excavator unfortunately we're probably still upside down in. In other words, I don't think we can probably recoup what we owe on it if we put it out for sale, whether that be by auction, or selling to an individual, which we would have to auction, um, I don't think we could recoup that money. I may be wrong, I would say that we maybe get a appraisal on it, someone that may be interested in it. Ritchie Brothers, I, I, I don't know if they could come out in appraisal, that would be a suggestion. However, I do not agree with buying a used truck, I don't agree with buying a used truck that's got sixty thousand miles or more on it. First of all, you just bypassed the factory warranty on it, and, uh, and you, and you're almost to the end of your emissions warranty on it. So, I, I'm not a fan of that, however, I don't think one-ton truck is necessary. I think an HD twenty-five hundred truck, that's the Chevy term for it, I think a, uh, an F two, uh, F two fifty, whatever they call their HD truck, is sufficient. I'm not a fan of the used part of it. And I'm not really big on getting rid of the mini excavator unless we could make money on it. I don't wanna just break even, I sure, sure don't want the city to lose money on it. And I agree with what Councilman Reesner said, we don't wanna have to run and rent something on short notice, because that's when the expenses come in, it would be nice to have it here for those things that come up. I also agree with Councilman Pardon, we haven't, we haven't utilized it like we, like we should have. Uh, he was, he was one of the big, uh, opponents on purchasing it because of that reason, and, and I understand that. And I, I think we could probably put it to mortgage. So, I'll start, I'll start with that.
So, in your, in your opinion?
Yeah.
Would, would a twenty-five hundred or a two-fifty be sufficient for pulling the excavator within the city limits?
Within the city limits is not a problem at all. I don't have any issue with that at all, whether that's a gasoline or a diesel engine within our city limits, or to the dealer in Cleveland, or I don't have a problem with that.
Mr. Mayor, if I might?
Let, let, Mr. Pardon, tell you.
That's, that's, that's my, one, one more question, one problem.
Sure.
Would you, would you, would your preference be diesel or gas?
Um, because of the cost of diesel, because of, if it's a new vehicle, okay, we're talking new, because of the cost of the diesel, because of the additional cost of the diesel engine, I don't think it is worth it, the gasoline engines are, are just as, uh, dependable, and, and, and less upfront cost and less maintenance cost than the diesel engine is. That's my opinion, I got a little insight on it, 'cause I, I see a lot of fleet vehicles, and, and so, absolutely. Yeah, I, I think, I think it would be sufficient, not saying that a one-ton wouldn't be ideal with dual rear wheels, because, uh, you don't wanna have a blowout on a rear wheel when you're hauling a, a trailer with a piece of heavy equipment on it. But, for, within the city, it's not a necessity, my opinion. Councilman Reesner?
Difference between a three-quarter ton, a one-ton, and a Chevy, same motor, same transmission, same right shaft, same rear end. Suspension is the difference.
The suspension is the difference on it, uh, but in an HD form, the three-quarter ton Chevy has the same frame thickness as a one-ton. Just doesn't, it, in the dual, in the dual, uh, option, it doesn't have dual rear wheels in the point five hundred. But, so, I mean, if we were hauling it to Dallas or San Antonio, totally different story.
What's the, I will defer this question to Chris, but what's the difference in the weight between an excavator and a dump trailer when it's fully loaded, for, if we, when they are cleared and inches and stuff?
Yeah, I don't remember what size that dump trailer is, 'cause you are probably talking about maybe the difference of, uh, a few hundred- Yeah, I don't remember what size that dump trailer is, because you are probably talking about maybe the difference of, uh, a few hundred pounds.
I just heard the stories of once they could only use quarter, a quarter fill or sit the whole thing up with the truck and make it work. With what we have existing.
Yeah, I don't know, what material is put in there?
That's. Just something.
But I know you take that, you take that three-quarter ton H D truck with a gasoline engine, and you either use a goose neck trailer, which is way better, or a bumper pull trailer. Goose neck means much better because you're putting the weight just a little ahead of your, of your actually, you're actually pushing the trailer. Um, there is no, there is not, no reason why that cannot, no problem, haul it. You ought to see what I haul in my truck. Yeah, yeah. And, uh, what I'm hauling is a lot bigger than that excavator is. And I've never had an issue and, and run with the truck. So y'all's thoughts on the truck down there while we're discussing?
I think, like you said, most of the trucks being used to haul up with, in a city, three-quarter ton heavy duty would probably work fine.
What do y'all think about my thoughts on we need, we, we, we've already made a commitment to the excavator? We, we, we paid a lot of it. We still owe money on it?
I think we should keep this covered.
What are your thoughts on that, Dave?
I don't know the, the numbers on it right now, so I don't know what we still owe, and I don't know what it's worth, and I understand not wanting to lose money on it.
We don't wanna lose money.
So I can appreciate that, but at the same time, we still owe, say, thirty or forty thousand dollars on it.
Thirty thousand.
Thirty-four.
And we can get back twenty-five thousand on it. Then that twenty-five thousand, what is that really worth in rental over the next six years, eight years? Because we're gonna be doing maintenance on this thing.
Absolutely agree.
We have to do upkeep, we tear things up quickly.
Absolutely agree.
If we rent it a month at a time, right, we, when we did the analysis to buy it, we compared it at a day rate. And we're not gonna use it at a day rate for twenty-one days, right? You use it at a month rate, and you get it for the full month at a discounted rate that's about the cost of ten days, right?
So I agree with you. If we could recoup or make money.
Fifty-five hundred dollars for the.
I'm sorry?
Fifty-five hundred dollars from.
Forty a month.
Yes, sir. I call them God.
What we, we're at a thirty-five K still holding?
Thirty-four.
Thirty-four.
Yes, sir. Didn't we pay like fifty-four, fifty-five when we bought it?
Fifty-two.
Fifty-two.
And then we pay to get the track prepared, we get, maybe get, uh, missing components.
It's worth it in this process to at least see what the machine's worth.
I understand that, but I'll just throw out there, like, today we did an, an abatement for, uh, code and chief. Uh, with the excavator whip, did that, filled up a dump trailer about half full of dirt with the pipe. Couldn't have done it without the excavator, which we would have rented one for one day.
No.
And then the delivery fees on top of it, you know, it, it starts to add up with that part, because it's something that.
Right.
Been paying on for three years?
Okay.
Yeah, three years.
Okay, so the mini excavator at this point is not affecting our budget. That's been, that's, that's there locked in now. But I think, I think we need to probably, let's, let's, let's do, see what it's worth. I agree with him. If it's worth twenty, twenty-five thousand more than what we owe on it, may, maybe, maybe a good thing. Yeah, you can do a lot of, you can do a lot of rentals with twenty-five thousand dollars. Um, on the truck, that's my opinion as, I still say we use the FEMA money that was recovered from the storm to purchase that truck. I agree with what Councilman Pardon says. We don't have disasters every year, thank God. So we can't always depend on that, but I say we do take advantage of that money while it's here. And a truck lasts a lot longer than, 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 than four years, should.
Well, our two that were out there, two thousand six, two thousand seven.
Yeah, exactly, so.
We're getting used to that.
Our luck is good out there. Luck is that good on storms, but I think, uh, I think we take advantage of that money that was recruited through FEMA, and I think we use that to purchase it. However, I do not agree with having to go with a one-ton.
Okay.
And I think that's gonna save you about fifteen, no diesel, about twenty-five thousand dollars probably. And there's a lot of good government pricing out there.
We're gonna bring a, uh, budget amendment from the night to move that money from FEMA because it has arrived into Councilman Lottley for that, uh, with that money.
Yeah, and with that being said, that also, that money does not affect this budget that we're discussing.
No, sir.
Doesn't work. Yes, exactly. So we need to move on to the budget we're discussing.
Sorry.
No, no, my, me, I need to move on. So safety supplies, will that break on that again, Councilman?
Uh, it was just that if you look at the, the budget for maintenance.
Okay.
Um, it's on page seven of eight. Uh, we find it's safety equipment, about halfway down the maintenance items.
Yep.
It's a three-eleven, fifty-three, zero-zero-one safety equipment.
Yep.
Twenty-four, we budgeted five thousand, spent twelve hundred. Twenty-five, we budgeted seven thousand, spent eight hundred. Next year, it was, I think it was eight thousand, we reduced that to four thousand. So if, yeah, if we're just, if we're gonna spend it, great, but we've got three maintenance guys.
Mm-hmm.
I don't think we're spending fifteen hundred dollars a piece on safety equipment, right? Maybe for bio harness and new harnessing glasses and gloves and.
Is that your normal?
Metastal guards and anything else?
I will just say that it was the kind of the norm for years going across. Larry said that that money was in there for specific.
Just P P M's classes?
Classes that they needed to go take.
Yeah.
And they've never taken them. So I wanted to leave it in there because.
If we're gonna spend it, great, right? I'm, I'm not saying.
That's why we lowered it down to four thousand.
My, my point with budgets is always put the money where you're gonna spend it. Don't create a slush fund by hiding ten thousand dollars in safety and spending that on lower repair, right? Put the money where it's gonna be spent so that we can see it's an honest budget of where we really think we're gonna spend it. I'm not saying lower the maintenance budget.
No, actually.
I'm just saying put it wherever we're gonna spend it.
But that was the place, I mean, we went through that the other night that we needed to cut to get down to that number that we agreed on to get back to zero. That was the first place we went and took three thousand off of, so yes, you'll see some things that come out of it next year.
It's P P. Chief, the numbers you gave are still budgets, not personal protection equipment. Is that what that's considered?
Safety glasses, hard hats?
I think it was more about the classes that they're supposed to.
Classes.
Yes, sir. It's more about that. Those are the original ones. Okay.
I would say leave that where it's at, that number right now, but that is a place you could make some adjustment if needed.
Yes.
Okay. Um, I'm, I'm giving him time to say who's numbers, Chief. That's why I'm, I'm gonna go back over.
Well, I can go through that list for you if you want.
What list?
All those things you talked about on my side. I can give them one by one real quick if you want. I have the responses to them too.
Okay. No, you're good.
I want to defend some of it. I do appreciate you about the excavator. Uh, I think that that is gonna be put to use with some of the things about code enforcement that we're talking about, and, uh, you know, with Royal Forest, I've lived here thirty-five years, and if I ever were drained in workshop one more time, but we did something with that, and we were successful with a lot that we did. We did one yard that, you know, kind of, uh, we'll have to go back and help that man down the line, but that's still waiting on, uh, on a, I don't know, an abatement.
Future project.
Future project. But other people in, uh, on that side in section two did benefit from it and did benefit from water flow, and now it's a lot better over in that section. And yes, we removed it to the next move, but then spring got here, and when spring got here, grass got to be cut, and so, um, I think the excavator's a great thing to keep. The truck, we can definitely look at what you were saying on that. The attorney, uh, I, I defended that the other night, I'll defend it again tonight. Uh, he was hired a month before I got here. Uh, you know, we're all still getting to feel our ways with that, but we've had a lot of big things that have come up over the year. Probably the biggest one that hit is that contract that goes back and forth with, uh, we haven't got it back. Just all the work that went into getting that written to the way it was. There was a lot of money in there. Uh, can we do some other things and, you know, the thirty-minute phone calls and stuff? Yes, I'll take care of that. I'll talk, I'll talk to you.
There's also some meetings. I'm gonna tell you, there's some meetings that we do not absolutely need him here. They, and you and I both know, there is some meetings that if something did come up on one line item, we could table that for the next meeting.
I didn't know that was an option.
Well, that is an option.
That's my ten months of inexperience.
No, no, that's an option. If, if, if Council agrees with me and they say we don't need the attorney at the next meeting, then we don't need the attorney at the next meeting.
Just let me know, I'll.
Okay, he's, he's, he's there to assist, advise, but if we have just normal housekeeping stuff.
Yes, sir.
There's really not a reason that he would need to be here.
Yeah, that makes.
There again, my opinion.
Perfectly good sense.
But that's the way I would like to see us move forward, since we can't cut some of these costs.
Well, I'm gonna talk to him also about when I call him and talk for ten minutes on the phone, I'm getting charged, that, you know, sometimes a call is just a call, but he's not the old attorney that, you know, didn't charge for a lot of stuff, so.
So let's look at that also.
Moving on, um, permitting, um, you know, we found something to convey that, uh, was kinda interesting because after our meeting, last council meeting, uh, Chief Carlisle, Captain Campbell, talked about, um, starting to, uh, crack down a little bit more on the thru trucks through our city, which they did start doing. Uh, once that started, here came people, they made any of those thru truck permits, which we've already hit a couple of, and I'll be bringing you a, uh, adjustment to an ordinance Monday night, because we don't have a price for anything over a seven-day one. And we've got people that work and live in Beach Creek that have to come through our city through the backside and need a six-month permit thing. We don't have it. It says the city council has to, uh, do.
We, we did that for a reason. We do not want the trucks coming through our city for a reason.
Well, this man's gonna continue because he works there every day, and he's gonna get ticketed.
But he lives, but he lives where?
That's why the city, the city council has to put a say.
Yeah, he lives wherever.
Beach Creek.
Okay.
Comes through the backside of our city.
Okay.
Anyway, that's just something that we'll talk about money on. But, but anyway, that opened up, that permitting part does bring in more money to the city that we weren't getting because we weren't doing that. And, you know, when you're talking about someone that wants a three-month or a six-month thru truck permit, that could be a, a nice amount of money for our budget on the revenue side. It can make up for different things that other things had to slide off when we had to adjust, uh, from the other night. So that's just something to think about with the permitting part. And Josh started with that, with, uh, today with that, and, uh, we, uh, we're, we're, we're working with that man right now because he does have a pretty good substantial, uh, funding that I believe is almost five hundred dollars that he's gotta pay. And, you know, he's still coming through our city every day, and so those are things that we think can bring in some money that should, you know, could have been done a while back, but I know you said you did it for a reason, but I think the times have changed a little bit. That road's opened up a lot more back there on Galaxy and Tram, and I think we've got to adjust to the changing times, and that's money that we're leaving on the table. And I think we need to be able to take, take advantage of that in our revenue.
Can those, can those permits please zone, Chief?
The permits.
Zone, certain areas they can operate in?
No, it's inside the city, period, the city, yeah.
Okay, there goes a reason why we didn't want that. But anyway, keep going.
I understand.
Yeah.
Uh, there's also. Well, it, the permits, it does, uh, describe which route they can take.
Okay.
If that's what you mean.
That's what I mean, I'm sorry.
The permits describe which route they can take.
Yeah, they'd be limited to a, to a route, I'm sorry. I said zone, to a route.
For example, we gave two today for two trucks that can't come across the bridge. They have to go another way to get here, which is gonna take them through, uh, Tram and Galaxy.
Then, then you have my answers now.
And those are permit fees that we haven't been getting for, for my ten months here, so. Moving on from permitting, mowers. I do have two new mowers.
I gave Scott permission to purchase those mowers, Council, with the money that was given over to the city.
One is a FEMA mower, yes, sir.
Yes.
And the other one came from the money we got back from, and said that's going back into the parks and rec budget, and that'll be coming in Monday night in a, a budget amendment to pay for that, but. We also, uh, excavator, attorney, code enforcement, um.
I can answer some of the questions, thanks.
Hang on, let me, don't, don't mess with me, Chief. I gotta get through this. Uh, and I will tell you the part about hurricane tropical storms. We might have only had four hurricanes over the past few years, but we've had the tropical storms and just the storms that can do a lot of damage in our city. And Chief stayed on top of that, doing a great job with FEMA, and that's why we're getting this, this money back from him because we had to shell that out at the beginning, and he's doing a great job of getting that back, so, uh, just kinda keep that in mind as we're going through here. Uh, those trucks that we have, two thousand six, two thousand seven, Larry, we, I mean, we take care of stuff in the city. People before Larry must have taken good care of it too. But the same thing with those mowers. Uh, sooner or later, the two thousand, two, two, two thousand seven mowers, they gonna run out of gas, and one of them did run out of gas, the other one is putting along now that the other two got here, so we're doing good. We, uh, did another abatement today, we took them today for, uh, code enforcement and police, uh, one of them, uh, got to actually use that new mower, uh.
Did you say we did a lot of the abaintments today?
Yes, sir.
I've been nosing.
If I was gonna say anything, Mr. Davis, I think I tried to hit it all there.
Well, I, there's some things on the code enforcement side.
Yeah, Chief, you have the code enforcement.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Uh, um, I, I've, I've got the same thing that he had, I'm just gonna look over my little notes on it. Start, starting with the code enforcement, um, the revenue, uh, that's listed as a payment revenue, it's not ticket money revenue. Uh, that's, so if you look at the code enforcement budget, you'll see in the payment cost, which is two thousand. So far, we actually haven't used that, but, uh, if, if we did, and when we bill people for the abatement that we did, and like, we just did one this year on that boys home. And, uh, the money that comes back, we don't have a place to put it, so we created a line item to receive that money.
So.
Which is a payment, that, that's nothing to do with citations.
As we talked about last time, right, I'm not in any way suggesting that code enforcement should write citations to pay for itself. My frustration after talking with the judge on Monday, in the previous, not the last month, but the previous seven months, one ticket was written, one, one ticket was written in seven months.
Citation.
That infuriates me. After I've been complaining and complaining and complaining about this same lots that will not, let me finish, please, that will not fix the crap that they're supposed to do by the ordinances, that we're not writing the letters, we're not enforcing it. I know that our code enforcement officer was going through his training, but we still have any means to write the citations, and we should have been doing that. So the, the judge did say in the last, I don't remember what he said, two months, there've been seven citations written.
Yeah.
That's better. But to hear the, one citation in the previous seven months, I cannot tell you how angry I am.
Well, that's not true.
Well, it's coming from the judge. So it's what made it to his court.
That's what made it to his court.
Probably what made it to his court. That, that could be the, the one that he's talking about. But that's definitely not true. We've written many more. He also categorizes things in repairable and non-repairable.
That's correct.
Something about theirs, so.
That's correct.
So it might be.
So if you can lower it, it's repairable, right? So the, the analogy he gave was if you have an inspection on your vehicle that's out and you get the su, the inspection completed before you come to court, you waive the ticket, right? You fixed it, it's abated, it's done. So if it's mowing the yard, you were given a warning, you were given a citation, and then you immediately mow it, it's corrected.
So there've been a lot of citations also mailed out that's never made it to his court because they don't even know they got the citation. Because the, like, lawnmowers that don't live here, uh, they get the citation mailed to them, and then they come back to us. They still stand because we did our new building. But, uh, until, until something happens to where we run into these people, there's really not much we can do about it.
Do we have their addresses from the county, right? The county's getting tax money from it?
Yeah, we have their addresses. We send it to the proper address, the same place we send the notices. That's only one of the people that we can't actually talk to.
You have to try to follow land on property or judgment against.
You have to try to follow liens on property or judgment against the property. Right? I realize there's a cost to that. At some point, you have to decide if it's worth it or not, but, you know, again, are we going to mow these people's property and do it at a city cost where the residents that are doing the right thing have to pay for mowing the odds of the people who aren't doing the right thing?
You're right. You gotta look at the cost of it. What is the cost of it? Yeah. Is there any money?
So some of it's in principle and some of it's.
Yeah, is there any money recovered from?
So far, anything that we've done.
But I mean, if you put a lien on that property, they will get that notice and they will respond to that notice when there's a lien on that property, especially.
I mean, I think they'll think I'm gonna sell it, but they'll respond to it.
Well, if there's a lien holder.
So far, the ones that we've done, the actual property themselves, not the ditch in front of the property, but the actual property themselves, they have responded back to us so far and paid us. And we just got two today, so we'll see how that works out. But so far, one hundred percent on that.
Okay, so again.
But the ditches in front of the house, it's, uh, we're unclear if we can ask for a lien on there, lawyers say if we can't, those haven't responded. And those are the ones that don't live here, uh, and they're not going to bank foreclosure. Usually it's a bank foreclosure that pays us, so, uh, but yeah, that, that's why code enforcement's so difficult. But, uh, but they move on, uh.
Well, we can't charge it for mowing, mowing the ditch in front of our house.
Well, no, and that, because that is the city.
Yeah.
But.
Well, but it's still required in there.
We, we can send an appeal.
We can send an appeal.
Whether they pay it or not.
We, there's, it's not a force.
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, we, right now, we don't know the way we can put a lien on the property.
Yeah, so pretty, pretty much anywhere from that back slope to, to the road is, is, that's, it's kinda questionable. But, but a- anything that's going on behind that.
Yeah, we're one hundred percent.
The general fund and dispersed however.
I need to look at the numbers on a, you know, to be able to add them all up. But you're saying that bottom number for the contract for the police department, that ten to eleven, does not equal all the numbers above it? Or does? Because in the previous years, your administration cost was above the line, not below it.
Yeah, I've, no, only one previous year.
No, this year?
Right.
That's.
This is this one. So this is last year, the first time we did it. I put it on the wrong side of the line. Cause it, and I was only down this time.
That number though equals that number, which it should.
Yes.
Now this is seventeen thousand dollars less than this number.
Exactly.
So this number needs to be up here, it needs to be above the line. It's part of all of that contract.
It's part of the disbursement.
Unless you're getting to add that to the contract.
I get it. So I did the calculation all the way down plus the bottom number. Okay, so all the rest of them? Well, somebody else said it was confusing the other way. So it is, it is there for that line, but what it did on this line, it took away.
Do I need to add the numbers up?
I had it the other way up.
Okay.
But it, we're using less than that dollar amount.
So the big difference was the change in the capital outlay for the police vehicle.
That's the thing that.
Moved up to the salaries.
Yeah, because we're saving money on, on that and the, I just went with the even split. That's the biggest difference.
So that is a disbursement out of that amount, so I'll put it. It's a disbursement, it comes out of that amount, that's correct.
Yeah, but this is talking about the police department, so I separate.
But it's no disbursement out of the money, out of the total.
Yes, that's why I said we included the calculation.
I know.
If you saw my Excel capitalizations, it would make sense.
Hey, I would rather see an Excel sheet than this.
Yes. Well, this is the printout from my Excel.
Oh.
So that, the reason I brought that up is one of your questions was, what do we get? What was the city administration fee? And that's, that's what they get. I think that's, that's all of those that I could. What I had, I had a couple more of longevity. Uh, we, we have been doing longevity for fifteen years with the police department. The city not as a whole, but the police department does longevity. And this year, I'm gonna change that to give them the officers their longevity every two weeks with their pay. I wanna make it the end of the year long sum to give that bonus.
That's better. You should call that retention bonus thing, you don't stay till the end of the year. You have a percentage of it, it's all or nothing.
Right, so.
But then you have to look at, most resignations come on January second.
Yeah, so, so that's, that's something I wanted to bring up. Actually got that idea from Scott. And he said, why do y'all pay him every, every two weeks for that? And then, and then you brought it up again, so. I thought that was a good idea, and I think it would make the, you know, just having a chump change on every two weeks versus a bigger sum at the end of the year. Okay, I brought that up. And the, the contract's based on the number of houses. I guess, yeah. It goes up every time that goes up. And then when there's businesses, we got a business fee. And if there's multi-house family that's gonna go in.
But you're still gonna have to talk about inflation and escalation acceleration.
So at the next round, when we discuss the movement, I do plan on officially adding a three percent administration fee. Uh, because right now I'm just taking three percent away. I give it to the city administration, but I'm gonna add that in there on top of it. The block member contract has that in there, has administrative fee in there. And then, um, I'm gonna do some kind of a cost of living thing.
All right, council, we're gonna take a five-minute break. The time is six fifty-five. Everybody get back in their cell. All right, guys, seven o'clock, let's get back into it. You ready in there, Chris?
Yes, sir.
All right. Seven o'clock, get back to my break. Are we finished with just individual discussion? Then we wanna start looking at the items, asking who needs, who, who sees anything that needs to be changed? Greg, I'd like to start with you on this. Councilman Varn, I'd like to start with you on this.
Are you talking about individual items?
Well, if, if there's anything you've made notes on that you wanna discuss, that you see that's out of place.
I guess the biggest thing that's been on my list, I mean, the, the truck, I agree with what you're saying. My preference is a new truck. But not, it's not a one-ton. So I, I like the idea of a four-ton. I don't have a preference on diesel or. I've got friends that have diesels, they swear by them. I've got guys that have gasoline and swear by them, so. Whichever. I do like the idea of a two-fifty or five-hundred, uh, three-quarter ton. As far as the, the police, I like the idea that the chief is proposing, um, for the most part. A few, a few things, just a few comments at least to consider. Maybe it's, I know you said that you want them to take an increase yourself.
All right, not that I'm not taking any, but I'm not taking maybe increase the pay.
Oh, just a big increase, okay. So, I mean, just as a general comment, I think the, the situation we're in in this country right now is inflation is, is very real.
Right.
It's, it's, it's something we have to, to offset. I think we're trying to offset it with a couple of budgets, you know. And, and I'm speaking for all employees, not just, not just police, right? I think, I think it's something we have to, we have to contend with. Is it, budgets are, are, inflation's going up, salaries are gonna go up, you know, people are gonna be hurting. They're gonna be looking for alternatives if they get into that position, right? So I think any little bit helps there, but, but then also I think we have to, we have to do what we can afford and afford comfortably and not, not put ourselves in a bind, right? So, so I do suggest five, you know, I don't know if it makes sense to evaluate other numbers, four or fifty, you know, if it, if it fits into budget better or, or not. Just, just, just a thought. And then also, I mean, I think you need to, I think you need to accommodate everybody that you can, you know, with, with, with the cost of living increases, right?
Police officers are very hard to replace.
Understood. And I mentioned this to chief, is, you know, what I don't wanna see happen here is a revolving door of, 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 of people that take a job because it's available. And it's not really gonna be the quality person that we'd like to have, right? So, so that said, I think we, we need to accommodate what we can comfortably. Uh, that's, if that's three dollars, four dollars, five dollars, whatever it is, right? Knowing that we're gonna have this same discussion again next year, right? So.
Everything that I put in there is zeroed out on the bottom nine on Scott's budget.
Okay, well, and, and the other, just more thoughts of mine on the, on the, on the police department, I think it's a, uh, I, I think the, the job that they do here is safety that they provide to this community. It's, it's hard to put a value on it. You know, I honestly sleep better at night knowing there's police patrolling or, you know, you're paying an HOA. And you've got, you've got, you know, a constable or sheriff patrolling through once, once an evening. I, I don't think you're near as safe, right? So I think it's a, I, I think it's a plus to our property values. I think it's a plus for selling our properties to other people that we've got a nice, safe community. And that we've got responsive officers. Apologize if I'm rambling, I've been up a long time. So, so to summarize, I say we, you know, if it's, I, I like the idea of, of not adding officers. I think we need to pay attention to seeing that we don't drop off on that quality of service that, that you are providing. And that if we start seeing that, then we need to, we need to reevaluate, right, at some point. That's been here, or, you know, next purchase. But, you know, maybe, maybe things get a little stretched, in the meantime, we adjust, you know, so. That's really, honestly, I don't have any individual items that I've come through where, uh, what's, what's kept me up tonight is the, you know, is how, how do we pay for, for these services without, you know, overdoing ourselves?
Yes.
I think this would, this would, this would take us a long time towards that, so.
Who's next? Just work your way across. Councilman Oss, thoughts? Anything you see that you'd like to change in this budget?
Uh, no, I don't, I don't, I didn't have any particular line item. A lot of what Greg said, I feel mostly the same way. I don't really have preference as far as the one-ton, three-quarter ton, diesel, gas. Would like to see used versus new, but would, you know, up for vote. I would just really like to, I don't want the city to run into, uh, where we're running into deficit and then we're pulling from our reserve. So I'd like to be a little modest and just see how this year goes and then evaluate next year. If that's one officer, bring another one on next year. If that's, it's up for vote, right? But that's what I would like to see. Really is. The only thing I would add as far as an excavator, which has to do with the budget is, uh, and maybe get more use out of it, is looking for the mowing attachment if you were gonna start trying to mow deeper ditches. We'll look at that later. I just wanted to add that, I forgot to add that earlier. But I think that's basically somewhere else that I didn't really have anything, any one thing stuck out to me.
You know, I took out the head of the option, right? I added that idea in to do with trying to retain the officers.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Yeah, I'd rather retain the officers and then, or whatever, you know. Make them, make it comfortable and then not lose, and then the quality of the officer versus.
Councilman Reener?
Yes, yes. As far as the difference between a gas and a diesel truck, I run my fifth or sixth diesel. And this is only fifteen hundred, with the rest of them in twenty-five hundreds. And I'll tell you upfront that, and we're told trailers, it's running ten to twelve, thirteen, fourteen thousand pounds. That those with gas engines have a harder time doing anything than what they will with a diesel. They're just, they're just all-around stronger, you get a different transmission with a diesel. And it's just an all-around better truck. Right now, and I don't mind telling you, on mine, I've got about six thousand miles on it when I bought it. But the diesel engine cost me nine hundred dollars, but the next line down was a thousand-dollar credit with a diesel engine. I don't know how that worked out, so I made a hundred bucks on that. So my preference part goes with diesel. And the mayor has been dealing with trucks more years than, than I have, and I, uh, so they can probably give it some more mechanical, but this hands down, a diesel truck is gonna be a duty truck than, than the other one. Also, if you look through the entire budget, now's not the time, but to do anything, but if you will see duplicate line items among new departments, then collect copies. The question is, if we had all the computers on one contract, could anyone be saved? I do not know. That's not, I mean, we have what we have, we have contracts in place for these, but if these contracts start to run out, that might be something to consider.
It's all one contract. It's just split up. It's true that we show that the police is paying for the rest, or an administration.
Yeah, it was hard to, I didn't know that, it's hard to tell by looking at the budget.
There's a major change they made last year with the new system and all that. Same thing with FICA and all that, that's why you can see how much we pay for fringe benefits and stuff. Where you wouldn't be able to.
That's good. I, I don't think I have other, any other comments, uh, right now, those are the, those are my, 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 oh, thank you for the job that you guys are doing on the streets. You hear bad things all the time happening, officers out and, and it's a dangerous position, no matter where you're at, so thank you.
Thank you, council. Councilman Legend, please, sir. Items we've talked about before, but just to look at, um, under the administration. Again, unemployment insurance, this year we're at forty-eight hundred dollars to date. Next year, we're budgeting seven hundred and fifty. So just doing a quick Google search, it says we're at least two-thirds below what we should be and maybe.
About forty-eight hundred?
Right, so it says the forty, right, doing a quick math, the forty-eight hundred is three-point-five percent. It said roughly one percent is the lowest you'll ever see, and it can go up to six percent depending on the classification. But that seven, forty-seven is less than one percent, it's about a half percent. So I still think we're low there. Mister Administrator, as we talked about, attorney's fees, I think you need to raise that number, just, I don't think we're gonna come down off where we are. Right, we're not even through with the year and we're at forty-five thousand and we're budgeting forty for next year.
Well, I have no percent.
That is ten, one thirty-one, uh, forty-six, zero, three, zero, and each four, they have about half which out yet. So we're forty-five thousand year to date, and we're not through with the financial year. Next year, we're only budgeting forty, so unless we're gonna do something drastically different, that number needs to be increased. As we talked about, audit fees, from what I understand, we're running one year behind, so at some point, we're gonna get double billed. So that needs to be doubled from twenty to forty. If we spent nineteen last year, we're gonna get double billed, right? So that's just those two line items together are forty grand. On the police department chief, this is just stating the obvious, right? Salary increases from last year to next year, based on this change in rates, is a hundred and fifty-five to a hundred and sixty thousand. So not just the salaries, but the fringe benefits, the additional pay, all of that escalates with that.
Are you talking about the?
I'm talking your regular pay that went up a hundred and twenty-one, six hundred. That's not the fringe benefits, that's straight pay. So all the fringe benefits that add on top of that insurance, retirement, that's all a factor. So if you figure it at one-point-three, which is probably low, you're at a hundred and fifty-five thousand, right? That's per year for the next five years. There is no way this city can afford in five years to increase this budget five hundred thousand dollars for the police department. And that's what we're talking about. So we need, it's gonna be annual, you're gonna do this next year, and you're gonna, that's what this chart says from the, from the county. You're gonna give a ten-a-thousand per officer per year raise for the next five years. I'm just saying, we cannot afford that as a city, so we need to have an alternate plan, or we need to figure out something that in five years, this budget can't be almost double what it is today.
I don't know if that's what they're going with, I know that's what they went with for this year.
I don't know either, I'm just saying, I see the writing on the wall, and this is not gonna work for next year and the next year and the next year. Unless taxes are gonna go through the frickin' roof. And that's not gonna be acceptable to any of the residents to be paying twice their taxes.
That's why I thought it was a better idea to not do the increase in officers, but for the increase in benefits.
Well, understand, right, that's your current cost. So next year, your budget's gonna go up an additional hundred and sixty thousand, and the next year, it's gonna go up an additional hundred and sixty thousand, because these salaries are gonna go up every year according to the plan that you presented.
That's not my plan.
It's a plan you presented to us for the county, and if we're thinking we're gonna match this or get close to this, there is no way this is sustainable for the city. We cannot come up with an extra hundred and sixty thousand dollars a year in taxes just for police salaries.
I agree, and I had, I had asked you.
And that means no hours.
I wasn't asking for a commitment of a four-year plan.
Understand, I'm just telling you, we're gonna face this again next year, right? So we need to start thinking about it now. How are we gonna deal with this? Right, are we gonna match it dollar for dollar, are we gonna be somewhere lower than this and say it's a better quality of life? I don't know what the answer is, but I'm saying if I look at four-year and five-year plan, not achievable. We have a real problem.
And what I was.
And that's serious, that doesn't even include the TBOA, which is gonna have to match that.
Right, and, and I have to deal with that.
Now, you know that number is half TBOA and half.
I still, but I'm also asking to match their, no, I'm just asking this year to match the increase. We're still behind, we're still behind.
I'm not arguing. Animals still be behind you forever next year. That's my point. And it's not sustainable. And that's without new police cars, that's without new equipment, that's only holding our baseline. There's no way we can afford that year after year for the next four years.
And believe me, that's on my mind.
And at this rate, there may not even be a COL form next year.
That's not right.
I, I'm just, nothing against, what I'm saying is, this isn't sustainable. I agree with what you're saying, our growth, our growth rate is not at that rate.
But I'm not presenting a four-year plan.
No, no, I understand, I know, but we have to kind of look ahead a little bit, because things that build never go away, they just keep building. It's gonna be an annual cost.
Yeah.
But you're not adding an officer, and, and I hate that, and I appreciate that you have compromised on that. You know, minor thing, chief, when you look in your budget, line two-eleven, fifty-four, fifty-two, general supplies, you're a third of what you've spent this year for your budget next year.
Yes, so I leave that line out of, but that's my line out of where I buy things of emergency instead of what I needed to buy. And at the end of the year, I've been, I'm already in the process of buying several ticket writer printers that I've been really desperately needing. And, uh, that, that, it, there's gonna be an increase, it'll be closer to the thing. There'll, there'll be some leftover, but not, not what you're seeing.
Okay. I think that was the bulk of my thoughts.
Yeah, if you notice the salary thing, the budget versus actual, by the end of the year, I've already done the projected, you know, the number of payrolls we have left. It's gonna be thirty-eight thousand, and that's after I've considered we're over on overtime. So when we're over on overtime, we're over forty-seven thousand, I transferred, just in the calculations, to make up for the overtime over, just to make that zero out. We're thirty-eight thousand over, underspent on our salary line item because of looking for officers and those positions have been open. At one time, we had two positions open for a good long time, and that really hurt patrol staff.
Go ahead, council.
Okay, I'm gonna look at this post right here. We adhere to this with the benefits and everything, it's roughly about three-quarters of a million dollars in four years. That would be to add to the police department budget, okay? My next thing is, on police raises versus, uh, they're across the board, it's like five percent raise, which one are we gonna go with? We're gonna go with something like this year? Or we're gonna go with like standard five percent raise or a merit raise?
A hundred, a hundred, and, I mean, a ten, ten thousand four hundred per officer, uh, that, the, by the way, not, not me, but, uh, for the.
What is that?
Officers, that's matches how much they're going up this year.
So you're gonna bet roughly here?
It's gonna match, not four years.
No, I'm just saying.
This year.
If that's one year, so while our officers remain, is that, it's gonna be a ten thousand dollar raise?
One-two percent.
Or it's gonna be a five percent raise, what would it be?
Ten thousand four hundred raise.
Was that thirteen percent?
Yeah. Now, I left the merit pay increase, so when we review, and we already have, when we review the, uh, uh, performance evaluations, we give officers from zero to five percent increase. we give officers from zero to five percent increase. Most of them are.
In addition to that thirteen percent raise?
Yeah, most of them are one percent, two percent, tops three percent usually, uh, it doesn't go up to five percent.
I, I know we have our police department, I know, I wanna make sure we're all safe, but if we're gonna somebody a ten thousand dollar raise, thirteen percent raise, I don't think we should go, go ahead and add another five percent on top of that, I don't, I don't think that's right.
I'm not gonna do that and I never do that. We, we haven't, I honestly grade them on the percentage, but I never have given officers five percent.
But you are saying they're still gonna get merit raise even if it's less than five percent?
I do still have that in there, yeah.
Okay, next, the vehicle, the vehicle, the three-quarter ton, you know, since we're gonna be in the city, we're not taking it on the highway, we're, we're named it up to sixty, seventy-five, eighty miles an hour, whatever, especially for the vehicles, so gasoline to me would be fine with the cost of diesel versus gasoline. Uh, the mowers, which I already addressed that with, by, you've already bought those, so that's no big thing. I do, or would like to see a split police department budget from Roman Forest to TBOA on equipment and their, and all the benefits. So we are sure we're not taxing our Roman Forest.
No, we have, we don't have actuals, we have a budget, but.
Actuals, so actual salaries, actual vehicles, actual vehicle maintenance, actual best, actual technology cost, right, actuals.
I'll say this, so thirty-eight thousand, uh, salaries not used, some of that, is that, the, the, sometimes there's some of the equipment supplies don't get used, don't get spent, so if we come on another budget, so is TBOA.
I understand this. I think we're both asking for it's not a field rule, but an actual, right? I understand that you're comfortable with the contract and that it covers the cost, I'd like to see the numbers that it covers the cost.
Yeah, vehicles.
I, I don't have anything to do with that, I have to lead on Marie to program and how all that works, but.
We would like to see that, I would like to see that, I think Nick would like to see that. So if we could do that, you know, we would, I'd have better fuzzy on the police one.
I agree, it needs to be in that format.
Yes, sir.
Separate.
I don't know how to do that.
Okay, then you're going forward.
She can handle it, I promise you that.
That the cost of living increase in the TBOA contract means it should cover those salary increases in addition to.
I guarantee you that's gonna be a talking point when we do the contract.
Yeah, okay, that's gonna be a big deal. So it's not that I'm not appreciative of everything that TBOA contract has done for the city, both in the officers and in the contributions to the building and things like that, and I think it's been very good for both of us, for, for TBOA and for Roman Forest, I'd like to keep the relationship. I'd just like to verify that it's not tax dollars subsidizing it.
One, one last thing is attorney fees, I think Scott is trying to work that saying out, I don't think we need to raise attorney fees. I know, I know we're over, well over budget, but as soon as the same with Southland finishes up, we should not be, we should not have that large attorney fees, and with you speaking to, uh, the attorney, I'd like to believe, address that what it's gonna be. I mean, it may, it may go up, I don't know, but.
I don't think we're very close to getting that.
I think it will, fortunately, I think it will go up with the, with the further development of the, of the station. I think that's, unfortunately, I think we are going to probably have to have a lot of attorney time. I mean, I tend to agree with him on that, that number's too low, even if we eliminate it from every meeting, that number's still low.
Unfortunately, we're very early in that Southern Oaks contract.
I know, well, let's look at what we're gonna do next year, I mean, we actually spend next year then, I'm just. I, I just feel like we should double our attorney fee.
Do you see a second list?
Uh, question?
With the Southern Oaks deal?
No.
No, I don't agree.
That.
You gonna eliminate some of the meeting, sorry, go ahead.
Asking a follow-up to Mr. Sanders, that, uh, side-by-side that you're looking for, that Marie is gonna put together, you want that before we approve the budget or is that just in the near future?
I would like to see it before we approve a budget, but I mean, but, but on the same sense, if we get, if it comes into the September or the October meeting for us, I still would like to see it, you know, I know we're working this budget, but I wanna see what we're doing.
Side-by-side on TBOA dispatches?
Yes, the TBOA at first and.
They got, I, I, I buy equipment, I spend on gas, I don't know where to allocate it. I, I have to create a, a system for tracking it to give or to.
You said Marie could do it, we'll, we'll get it figured out.
Do all the officers use the same credit card for gas and go to a single account or does it go to multiple?
So they can use the single account, I have to figure out how many miles is patrolled there and how many miles and do the math for the gas.
You can do it as a percentage, you can do it as a percentage of your total fuel bill.
I could do, I guess I could do it.
Get this back to the regular budget, right?
So we're saying. A fuel, a fuel.
A fuel and then there's, I mean, if I do to track it separate going forward, that's accommodable. Going backwards, it would be a pure gas.
Well, I understand about going backwards, but I think going forward, going plan this coming year, I think we need to do it because each vehicle, you should have a tracking number on that vehicle, when they use a credit card, even though it's a same credit card. Use that vehicle, it's listed without credit card on that charge.
And that's just a gas example.
Yeah, but.
But going, going forward, I can figure out how to track all that with, I mean, look at all the categories, but.
But is it assigned to an officer though, isn't it, and certain officers are assigned to this TBOA contract?
No, we, we usually, we, we, like, to, to change up the things, we'll have one, like, let's say, uh, the first week of the month, the one person will be patrolling there, one person will be patrolling there, and then the next week they shift, they switch.
But, so.
Actually, they switch into the same ship because they'll patrol all the street here, all the street here, and then you break up the ships, they switch.
But you still have, in one car going here, you have one car going here, one's for Roman Forest, one here. See, it doesn't matter if they're switching, that car's over here costing TBOA a list dollar.
He might have to exit the car and switch and get into the.
No, no, I, I'm not saying that.
What he's saying, Larry, is Officer Hutchins may be in Roman Forest for the first half of the ship and he may be in TBOA the second half of the ship in the same vehicle.
Yeah.
So there's not a way to track miles and there's not a way to track maintenance.
I, I understand, we have, we have, we have, I understand a half day at one, it's a half day at the other, but we have one vehicle, I don't care if it's half a day here, half a day there, we have one vehicle in their one full shift, okay? And maybe another vehicle, even though it's split, it's still one vehicle shift.
Yeah, they just gotta figure out how to track it, but going backwards is gonna be hard, if, if I know that those are what you want in the future, I can figure out how to do that.
Let's work on that in the future.
Yeah, but to give you.
I understand, I, I just wanna know, make sure the budget when we come in, we have these figures, so we can make damn sure what we're talking about instead of, you know, you're saying.
There's, you don't trust my assurance that that's happening.
I did not say that, Chief.
So, I need to, I need to do your report, that's what you're saying.
The what?
You don't need a report from Marie anymore. For, for this budget?
I don't think you can get a report from Marie, from what I understand, I don't think it's trackable.
It's not trackable.
It's just gonna be a yes. See, I thought that there was an individual officer assigned to TBOA for the day and then a.
For the day usually, I guess sometimes, like he said, they switch in the middle of the shift, but. But we don't have, so if for some reason we were to lose to the, the BOL contract, we would go through and figure out who gets laid off and who doesn't, we have that option. If the, if we lost it and somebody was assigned to that contract, we might lose the better performing officer and not have that option. So if, if, if I wanted, I would go by performance, who's the better performing officer?
I'm not asking about staffing.
I can assign officers to it.
I understand, but that's your, that could cause a problem.
All right, getting off, let's go back to the budget, so, do you need the numbers for this decision today or tomorrow?
No, I do not, I would like to have a track.
He wants to track it going forward.
I'll work on it.
And, and I don't see a problem with that, I understand there's some tracking issues, I get it. But I think we could get something a little closer than what we've got, and I think that's what he's looking for.
I'll figure it out. For the future.
It's Marie's father line.
So it'll be part of mine, I gotta create the way to figure out how to track it.
My concern is the same as, as, as Mitch, is I, 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 this is not sustainable, sustainable from year to year. Only salary increases, I understand the position you're in.
I'm not asking here every year, I'm just.
No, no, sir.
But it's really next year.
I probably will, but I'm not pressing.
Hang on, my turn. I understand where you're at with, with, with your staff, I, I, they're looking at other departments, I get where you're at right now. I'm concerned about the, the taxes coming out of these payrolls, doesn't look like enough has been, uh, uh, into the budget?
I disagree.
Okay, um, I think that's.
It's line item listed in here.
It is line item listed, even with the new salary increases, okay? It sounds like from some other items that you mentioned, that we're not gonna be zeroed out at this bottom line.
Nope.
I know.
Now, that's the frustration, right, is we, after the discussions we had last week and the feedback, the intent was to cut money from the budget and not only have we not cut any money from the budget, but we've not gained the officer we were talking about adding. Yeah, so we actually come away less well off than we were when we met last time at no savings.
I completely disagree, I completely agree with that statement. For me, I think not adding an officer is where we need to be, I, I understand you're saying one, so just, just like a show, you're not sticking for the whole.
Not, not what I'm saying, what I'm saying is, in addition to not adding one or two officers where we were when we met last time, we're not adding any officers, but we have cut the budget zero dollars. We spent every dollar that was allocated for adding two officers and we're staying even at nothing. So that to me is a huge loss.
Yeah, so we cut the truck, right?
We cut the truck, but that's from the twenty-twenty-five budget, that's not even in the twenty-twenty-six budget.
Yeah, the truck's not part of the budget.
Right, so when we're looking at the budget that our goal was to cut money from, we have cut nothing and we did not add an officer that that budget accounted for, we, budget accounted for two officers and we've added nothing, but we have not cut a dollar out of the budget and we're actually probably have a shortfall when we look at attorney's fees and we look at the audit fees and some of the other things that need to be increased.
I was counting the trucks.
We're doing nothing for it.
Yeah, so you kind of understand where he's going.
I, I, I want to say.
So that's my frustration.
I understand the need for the adjustments, I'm not disputing that. Questionable whether or not we can meet the county dollar for dollar that we're suggesting.
If I may, the issue here is not getting more people, the issue is losing the ones we have to the county, hiring new people off the street, having to retrain those, that's the issue.
Well, it will be ongoing. So that's the problem, is right, we can't afford to do that as a city, we can't meet the county's payroll year after year after year, we simply cannot afford to do that.
Number two, I doubt if the county can do that.
Well, the county hasn't proposed and that's what they're going to do. I think they have a plan that we can't afford to meet, so at some point, we're gonna be at the point where we're gonna have to say, we cannot raise your salary to meet in competition with the county, and the question is, do we start that this year that says the county's going up ten thousand dollars, we're gonna go up sixty-five hundred, we can't afford to go to ten thousand dollars per officer.
And even if we don't go with the ten thousand, even if we don't even discuss that next year, just the three percent on the increases that we have, by the time we get there, it's gonna be substantial compared to a three percent cost of living or a five percent cost of living. What I'm saying is, it, it multiplies.
That's correct.
It's not a hundred and sixty every year, it, it multiplies.
That's correct, it builds every year.
So.
And just another point, I guess, on the budget that is, uh, we're doing exactly what we did this year. We're not putting anything in there as far as parking equipment or beautification whatsoever, right? We're not doing anything in there, not even a mower.
Uh, the mower I'm not concerned with for the next budget year after this one. But I think in the next, in that next year, we, we'll, we'll have to start with it.
Yeah, the problem, yeah, problems down the road, not, not this year, with the truck or the mower, trying to.
Yeah.
They may not have an option. Ticket out is sort of a maintenance department are covered this year.
Covered for, covered for three to the, three to eight weeks?
Take care of our stuff and we might take care of things, at, at least three to five years, if not longer, looking at the numbers they got right now and the longevity they got out of the, uh, two trucks and the other two mowers that took a slow death.
So I think, I think everything's revolving around the salaries on the police department, the additional cost for the attorney, the additional audit cost.
And that may or may not be the case, you'll need to check.
We just don't know where that is, it was gonna be this year, they're not ready for Monday night for August and, uh, we don't know if they're gonna be ready for September, we're hoping they come in in September and we can figure that out for the true money. Uh, in fact, we're pretty much, I've told them they want to be in September, so they know our expectations, so I don't think we need to add anything there, but we're gonna make sure it gets here at the September council meeting.
I think we're shortcutting ourselves on our attorneys for the rest, for the next year because of the, because of the additional.
I agree, you know, the largest part that works been done, I mean, we're waiting on a counter back for a minute that's gonna come back.
And I hate to disagree with you, but I think what's gonna happen is you're gonna see a whole nother round of the same thing.
Absolutely.
I don't disagree with that, I just think that, uh, I think we'll be able to cut some other things that happened early on in October, November, December, where we paid up a very large chunk of lawyer money that was not associated with Thornbury Development. It was with a lot of other things and a lot of people asking for him to do work for them that didn't even be done. I'm just saying, I think we can make it work, but, uh, we can sure go back and look, but we shaved off twenty-four thousand dollars since last week and, uh, the well is running dry on our side.
Hate to be a broken record, but we also lost two officers since last week.
I understand, I understand that.
Two future officers.
But we, just saying what you said, well, if I'm wrong, Chief tell me, but the same number that was in the, uh, salaries just got dispersed there, it didn't change the number, the zero number was still the same zero number that we brought either way. It didn't change, it was all about the same, the numbers, we shaved off what we were asked to shave off and then Chief, uh, moved around the salary numbers differently from raises from the officers. So the number didn't change in that aspect, am I saying that wrong?
No, it, mine, mine is exact, penny for penny.
The budget's the same, it just went to.
No, actually it's not, it's twenty-one thousand less on the patrol vehicle, because I found that uniform. So tw- twenty-one thousand less, like I talked about in the last meeting, but, uh.
So that, yeah.
Outside of that, the twenty-one thousand, it's a dollar a dollar. I, I reallocated what I was asking for the officers into salaries just to try to keep officers because we're gonna lose them. If we don't do something, we're gonna lose them, we don't appreciate them, whatever, uh, we're gonna lose it and we're gonna be in that situation.
Appreciation has nothing to do with it, Chief.
We, we have one more thing made of it, we're, uh, Marie and I, uh, Monday night, we're bringing some budget amendments to the table, uh, things that we didn't allocate properly, just ignorance of the rules. And so we're, you know, we're taking that forty thousand dollars that I brought to you and you accepted, but we didn't do it formally. So we're doing that, we're putting that in that parks and rec thing, we're buying the mower out of that. But there's also, we're also bringing to you two donations that were those conduits that were twelve thousand five hundred dollars each and we're gonna ask to put those into a capital outlay under administration and then to be used for anything that would be needed for the city as we go through the year, such as an overthink of a lawyer. A slide for the park, for Mister Park, different things that we could spend that money on, uh, because it's in a, uh, it's, it's in a, it's just in. it's, it's in a, it's just in the donation right now, and we've gotta move it.
Move down, move up.
So we will move it, and it'll be a rollover, it's not part of the budget.
Alright.
What we do with that money is, we can discuss that, but we wanna put it in to a capital outlay under the administration, where I can then have, uh, I can have a say on where it goes, but bring it to the council before we do it.
I agree with that, you're not talking about that, I agree with that.
Yes, sir. But I don't think-
We, we gotta get it, we've gotta get it, we've gotta get it assigned, but that's why you're doing that.
I probably want to specify, we're signing for the budget closes.
Yeah. Counsel, or, or are we, are we ready to take a vote on our, um, proposed tax rate?
I have one question.
Sure.
Uh, what was the, what was the tax rate that you presented over the state?
Fifteen?
I'm sorry?
The, the, uh, the maximum?
Was it the maximum?
No, no, this is-
This one's five.
The midpoint.
Five, and the other is five, six, seven, eight.
Yeah, yeah.
Was that the maximum?
It's just below voter approval.
This is below voter approval, this is the mid.
Okay.
So this is higher than it was last year, less than it's allowed to be by?
What, what would the revenue on the voter approval bring in?
It was bringing in about fifty, about, about fifty, fifty dollars more on a hundred thousand dollars of value. So instead of the twenty-seven, eighty, um-
Right, I know, I saw it sitting there, I don't remember what the-
I don't remember what the numbers were.
It was like four dollars a month on the home.
Right.
But that's what, but that wasn't, I was, um, my question is, uh, because I think the mid rate was gonna give us fifteen, hundred fifty thousand dollars for the act form. Or I, I'm wrong, did you?
I think I'm-
It's on my page.
What?
Where's that?
Are you gonna do this thing?
Okay.
Okay. You talking about the five, six, and one?
Yes, ma'am.
The highest one?
The highest.
I, I get it, one hundred percent, yeah.
Because he, he's looking for this bottom line, what's the difference between budget?
What?
Uh, what's the, what's the number on the end of budget?
Let me see, I still have it.
I'll close it, I'm sure.
I don't know.
I can do some fancy math and get it to you, but I must be a mess.
Can I get this, how I get my own?
Just write it down.
Oh.
It's not shit, it's okay, it's the answer. It's actually, I just-
How many people are there in here?
So, I guess my question is, is just, I know, this looks, this budget was so, I feel like we're not, we were closer last meeting than we were this meeting. I know, but we're talking about, uh, not being able to continue, uh, with the growths.
Not being able to continue with the ten thousand four hundred dollars per year salary.
Right.
Which is not what I, I know, I actually handed that out, that, that was a slide, I think that was-
You should have folded it.
Yeah, that was a slide for a presentation, I had no idea what they-
So, uh, they logged it on this year. And it's not that I'm not-
I had to take it out of saving.
Yeah. It's not that I want us to taxes go up, but if we're looking at two thirty-two a month versus four dollars a month for the next tax rate, if we I would be interested to see what that looks like if we were able to gain an officer apartment. That would be.
It would not cover an officer.
Oh, what?
So just doing a quick math here, it looks like, if you went to the maximum voter approval, it would bring in an additional forty-six thousand dollars. An officer, you need to figure about eighty thousand, eighty-five thousand.
Okay, alright. Thank you.
The one we have is about costing less than ten dollars on for increasing tax.
Oh.
I, I spend more on that here than a day.
I'm sorry, do you want me to explain?
I didn't really need it that way.
Okay, so Counsel, we're still on item number five, this was discussion, consider proposed budget, and schedule a public hearing. Uh, I think that, regardless, we're going to schedule this public hearing. Okay, we're not approving the budget. It's not. But I think we can go ahead and take action and schedule this public hearing, because we have to have something at that point approved. Do we might disagree with that?
If you adopt the tax rate, the number six, we also schedule a public hearing, that also-
Yes. Oh, that's the same, same time, okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so, any other comments or discussion, Counsel, before I move on to item six?
So we're going to wait till when the next Monday, uh, two, three?
So, to, to, to tonight, tomorrow, hopefully on Friday, tonight, tomorrow, or Friday night, we have to approve our tax rate. Our tax rate.
Is there further discussion we need before we can approve the tax rate? Is there any information that we don't have that we need? So-
If we're all in agreeance that the tax rate that we are looking at is where we're going to eventually mold our budget to, I don't see a problem with approving the tax rate. I don't think any of us would approve the budget as written right now, but we know what rate we're gonna use to get to our, our end. Am I, does that sound right to you guys?
Yes. I think so.
I don't think anybody's in favor of lowering or raising that proposed tax rate that we've been working around.
I would agree that we need to move whatever money we need to within the budget to keep the overall value the same, which is this tax rate they're proposing.
Is that a good point? So I don't see that, uh, uh, approving this proposed tax rate tonight is a step we have to take, and I don't see us varying, I don't, I don't see us varying off from this tax rate. I think we are all comfortable with the tax rate that we're looking at, and we will mold the budget around that, and stay within those confines. Am I, am I correct on that?
Yes.
Okay. I have to do these roll call vote, I have to do M and O and sinking debt separately, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so item six is consider and take a record vote on a proposed tax rate for maintenance and operations and interest and sinking debt needed to fund the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six budget for maintenance, operations, and debt services. And schedule a public hearing that, that will be September fifteenth, here at City Hall, at five thirty P M. At this time, I'm gonna take a roll call vote, so the proposed maintenance and operating tax rate would be zero point four four six four. That is an increase over the current rate. So the proposed M and O is zero point four four six four. So let's go down the line, so we're gonna start with, uh, Councilman Sanders, what is your vote on that tax rate, sir?
Four.
Four? Councilman Davis, what is your vote on that tax rate?
Four.
Councilman Reesner, your vote, sir?
Four.
Councilman Ellis?
Four.
Councilman Park?
Four.
Okay, the proposed tax rate, maintenance and operations of zero point four four six four, has passed unanimously. The proposed interest and sinking debt tax rate, the proposed rate is zero point one zero one one. This is for answers and sinking debt, starting with Councilman Park. What is your vote, sir, on that proposed rate?
Four.
Okay. Councilman Ellis, your vote?
Four.
Councilman Reesner, your vote?
Four.
Councilman Davis, your vote?
Four.
Councilman Sanders, your vote?
Four.
Okay, the vote for answers to sinking debt at zero point one zero one one is unanimous, passes. This sets the total tax rate to zero point five four seven five percent. Okay, we will set a public hearing. Uh, let's, let's go ahead and schedule that public hearing September fifteenth, twenty twenty-five, at five thirty P M, just to let you know I'll be out now. Okay, got one gonna be absent?
I, uh, we, we can, it doesn't have to be that date.
It has to be before that day.
It has to be before. Yeah. Yeah, we could do it on the ninth.
Because it has to be ahead of that, so the ninth is, uh, the-
Friday.
Yeah.
So I'll be leaving that Saturday, September, so Friday, it's fine for me.
Okay.
September ninth.
September ninth is a Tuesday.
It's a Tuesday.
Okay, it's Tuesday, September, so, Katie?
Oh, I'm getting it for two, thank you.
I may or may not be back in town, because I'll be an hour or so, but we just do, heading up Sunday.
Man, I'd like everybody here.
Okay, what about the week before?
Week before is holiday on Monday. This is a town hall. This is the public hearing, to take comments on the proposed tax rate. We, we, we have proposed it.
It's strictly on the tax rate, correct? Is that the reason we can't do it next Tuesday, right after the council? And you got the email, I sent you beginning September first, three business days for meetings now, it's no longer weekends and holidays, no longer town, per Sunday two-hour notice.
Yes, sir, it's gonna be the administrative report Monday night, but yes, sir, I it's gonna change a little bit.
I understand, that still gives us seventy-two hours, though, if you wanna just do it next Tuesday, and if it does, everyone's gonna be here on Tuesday.
Yeah, because I have to leave January first, which is out.
Yeah, yeah, at least on the next Tuesday, the twenty-sixth.
How long does the meeting have to be?
At least an hour.
I thought it was thirty minutes, is what I read.
Would you do it before the council?
We did, we opened it for thirty minutes and let it open for thirty minutes, and then you closed it.
No, we can't.
That's what happened past, I think we did it before council meeting, last year.
So we could do it before the council meeting, because that change doesn't go into effect until September first. So, you do, you don't have to do three business days until next month, so this month you could still do it, including the weekend, we can do it before the council meeting.
Because that takes effect September one, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, just, you talking about this coming Monday? Okay, also remember, we're having a public hearing for the comprehensive plan, that night also.
Oh, that's right.
But, but it's not open for the thirty minutes like what your budget one is.
But it's still open.
It's just, if anybody shows up to talk about it.
But they could.
They could, but they have to fill out hard, and then they get to come up and talk, so.
Is it the public?
Sir?
Do you have the public, the public?
It's already done.
It's already done.
Yeah.
What, what time is that scheduled for?
Uh, six o'clock. And it's in the middle of the meeting, actually, if they're public hearing.
This is Monday night?
Yes, sir.
Twenty-fifth?
Yes, sir.
Can we do it five thirty, Monday, for the meeting?
Uh, you're talking about this?
You have the budget?
Oh, yeah, I can change the whole thing, is it two separate agendas, or same agenda we start?
Public hearing needs to be separate from a regular, a regular council meeting.
So we're gonna have a public hearing on the tax rate at five thirty, and then a regular council meeting.
Close that, open the regular council meeting.
I would say you can start at five fifteen, because I think you have to have it open for thirty minutes, and then we'll close it at five forty-five, and then get your time to, whatever, clean up what we had to do before we start at six.
This Councilman Park, are you able to be here by five fifteen, I don't know, is he stretched for you?
It'd be close, like, I got home today right at five o'clock, so, um, I'll be close, I should go. Unless, unless you can keep the freeways from having accidents. But if we start at five thirty, it'll be okay, if we, we just can't start a council meeting early, we can start later. If we started at six oh five, we'd be okay. If we ran a little over on the public here.
Would it?
I think so.
I mean, if it had-
Sir?
We could run, because you're talking about both, you're talking about the questions about budget?
Uh, we could open it for the thirty minutes at the public hearing for the budget. You could do that before, right?
So it is both. Just to make sure I'm understanding, so we're saying if we do the public hearing on the tax rate at five thirty, you're doing the public hearing on the comprehensive plan at six?
No, sir. Public hearing on the comprehensive plan will be in the middle of the meeting, when it comes to the agenda.
It's just an agenda item.
It's an agenda.
So it's not a separate public hearing?
It is, it is a separate public hearing.
It needs to be a separate meeting, that needs to open and close, not just an agenda.
There's a public hearing, it can't be in the middle of a, of a regular meeting.
So I think the public-
We're gonna have to do some-
I don't know what the people at the comprehensive plan, they told me to-
A public hearing is one thing, but you can't, you can't have a public hearing in the middle of a regular meeting, and you can't put a regular meeting in the middle of a public hearing.
So we're gonna open and close the public hearing on the comprehensive plan, and then open City Council.
I don't think we can do it, because we have to put it in the, this can probably be seven days in advance of the publication date.
But it's already in there for six o'clock. We're just getting, right?
Uh, we're, we're talking-
Oh, you're talking about for the, okay, so we need seven days' notice for the-
So it's not gonna work.
Tax rate. So then it needs to be-
So it's gotta be, uh, sometime, uh, the twenty-eighth or other.
But, before the first, because Councilman Reesner's leaving on the first.
Mm-hmm.
And that's also, what, later day week?
Nah, shoot, I can't do it on the twenty-eighth, I'm gone, I'm gone, I'm not needing it on the twenty-eighth.
That's the-
What, it's on the twenty-seventh, how about?
We can't do it on the twenty-seventh, it's not that much notice. Gotta have seven days, seven days starts from morning.
Well, Thursday, the Wednesday.
So I have to come from the-
Oh, well.
I can't delay it.
If it was the month, plan the next month, is there urgency to do it in August? It's really not.
Budget's more important, right?
I had budget, it's more important.
I understand, it's not a problem in the comprehensive, it's a problem with seven days' notice.
Right, so why don't we just push it till September's, sometimes?
Sometimes it's-
Take care of our budget stuff this month, and then comprehensive plan in September.
Why don't we do that?
That way we don't have to try to, judge so much.
Scott?
Sir?
We're bumping comprehensive plans the next month on this presentation, you need to get with those folks, so they'll know, our budget is more important.
I'll take care of it.
Thank you, sir. So now, with that being said, we have to advertise the public hearing on the bu, on the-
On the, on the tax.
So what date are we gonna do that?
How about Sept- September eighth?
Can we do it?
First Monday, I'm saying Monday.
Well, when I had it on September ninth, that was after seven days, so.
Pardon me?
When I put it to September ninth, that was exactly seven days.
September ninth is a long way forward. That's more than seven days.
That's two weeks.
That's three weeks.
Three weeks, yeah.
Right, we're on the twentieth today, yeah, that's fourteen days.
It's just as long as it's done ahead of September fifteenth.
Yep. Um, how about September eighth, and that, just to reason, I'm wondering you back?
Yeah, so, um, for any fact, I'm thinking, I'll just tell them I'm there, I've gotta leave early, and I may have to go back out, I'm gonna have to make several trips back and forth, dollars.
You talking about on the ninth?
Uh, I'll just tell them I've gotta leave, and so if I leave out there the seventh, I'll be here the eighth for a meeting on the ninth. I'll just make that change.
Okay, so the ninth is open now, everybody can be here on the ninth?
Yeah.
Five thirty, five, what, what did we decide on that?
Five thirty, we'll have to do.
We good on that? Okay, the public hearing, uh, proposed budget and tax rate on the ninth of September at five thirty.
Five thirty?
Five thirty. And we will get, uh, we will find out when the comprehensive plan public hearing has been pushed to. He's gotta get with those people and get their schedule.
So, just so I understand, we're gonna push them, but we have no budget on this Monday night's agenda. Why are we not just continuing forward?
Can't have a public hearing in the middle of a regular meeting.
I could put it at the beginning of theirs, I mean, we can do it first.
Did we put the notice in the paper for that?
Yes, sir.
For six o'clock?
For the comprehensive plan.
Comprehensive.
So we can still do it at six o'clock, and then we can do the meeting at six thirty?
Okay.
Sure.
Here, we're just thinking it's a thirty-minute discussion, we live in it to thirty minutes.
Just separate the, just separate the agendas.
I mean, honestly, there's probably less than ten people that are ready.
Yeah, so yeah, just separate the agendas, maybe two separate meetings if you did.
Can you go back, if I might ask about tomorrow night, because this, this series is scheduled for the night, tomorrow night, and the next night. I'll be going to meet tomorrow night and the next day.
That's, that's, he had, he had originally wanted to still discuss.
It was just depending on how far this got, is the reason- It was just depending on how far this got is the reason we booked them, because we needed to get them out of them. We just booked them in case we needed to, we didn't get through it.
But...
So, we're, we're not at the point of approving the budget.
No.
We are at the point of approving the tax rate, so it's just a question, do we, is there anything to be gained from continuing to work through the budget tomorrow, or do we all need more time to look at that and then we can do this in another week or two?
That's what I was kinda trying to say.
So, I don't think that there's a lot of benefit to tomorrow unless somebody has something specifically they want to discuss.
I'm not available Friday night, so if y'all wanna do something, do it tomorrow night. I'm, I'm not, you gotta talk to the counsel. If y'all wanna meet again this week, we have to do it tomorrow night.
I don't think we, I don't think, it was, it was, we had to announce it in advance. We were gonna utilize it, so we covered our bases by doing it all three days, but I think we covered everything tonight, right?
Yeah, I mean, the only thing that we need to discuss is, right, what can we really do for the officers' raise? Can we make that full jump or do we need to make a midpoint? And then you need to go back and look at attorney's fees and audit fees, just to confirm what those should be and then the workers' comp rate, and that's really the only things we have left on the table, I think.
That was it? Yeah. Yeah, so, no need for tomorrow or Friday, correct? We deal with that? So, we need to, we need to put on the marquee that the twenty, the actually ninth? There is no...
The ninth.
Cancelled.
Public hearing.
Cancelled.
Yeah.
It's on the marquee.
It's on the marquee, we didn't do...
It's canceled.
If you wanna have a meeting, I'll come in.
Okay, I gotta, for us new people to the world here of, uh, the... When will, there's a... Uh, the things that we're talking about, the two things you want me to look at, Reese's gonna look at the comp, uh, the workers' comp and then Chief with the officer's rate.
Mm-hmm.
Are we saying we're gonna come back on the night that we're gonna approve the budget and just, okay, that's what...
We approve the budget till after the public hearing on the tax rate. So, first, we have to get the public hearing and if everybody, if we get two thousand residents in here that says we're not paying more taxes, then we need to re- rethink what we're doing.
Well, we do have to have a proposed budget for that night, an agreed-upon proposed budget.
And I think we've got that here that needs some fine tuning, but the number is the same.
So, when do we, the numbers will be the same, that is correct.
So, if we did an internal adjustment later or we do it beforehand?
But the budget is line by line is what is proposed, but the lines have to be correct.
So, so you're, you're, one of the things you're concerned about is the unemployment or...
That's on the administration side. They're carrying, I think, four-hundred-eighty dollars versus what we spent this year is ten times that amount.
Okay.
So, it's just verifying, is that the right number?
The line items. Uh, the attorney's fees are about probably ten thousand dollars shy right now, maybe a little more than that.
And the last is the audit. If we're gonna get double billed, we're running one year behind on the audit charges.
So, what if we're gonna...
We're gonna get billed twice this year or...
Kick the can.
It may, right, so if we keep the audit firm, it may kick, if, if we switch audit firm, we may be a double billed.
So, I think what we're saying is, it may be nine thousand eight hundred dollars raised for your officers. That's what I'm saying. It, it, it has to work out and the numbers are gonna stay the same, but the line items have to be correct when we propose that budget to the citizens. We can't change things after that.
I'm not saying it has to come out of the salaries, but if we have to come up with thirty thousand dollars for those line items and we have to figure out where that thirty thousand comes from to not change the budget total value.
So, do we need to get that together and meet tomorrow and, and look at it, or do we need more time to do that? Maybe we need more time. So, but we do have to meet and agree that that is the budget we are proposing before the public hearing.
And I would, we'll, I would think we do it tomorrow then. Sorry, y'all backed out.
I understand, are y'all ready, but y'all will be ready for that.
We'll figure it out.
Okay, alright.
Or we'll...
So, Lee, Lee, what's on the marquee, on the marquee, remember?
Yes, sir. The backroom women are moved to Monday night at six o'clock at their public hearing and we're open to our meeting at six-thirty.
Yes, sir.
So, you'll need to have that public announcement also, the council meeting's changed to six-thirty.
Roll in clear.
So, five-thirty here, morning.
Tomorrow.
Yes, sir.
That should be a relatively short...
You said that online, did you?
He did.
He did.
Twice. Alright, any other discussion tonight, Counsel? Do I have a motion on the floor? I have a motion. Councilman, Councilman Reesner to adjourn for the evening.
I make a motion, we adjourn for the evening.
Do I have a second? Councilman Sanders, seconds. All in favor of adjournment? It is unanimous. This meeting is closed at eight-oh-six P M. Alright.